I'd like to ask those who are willing and able, please join me in a brief moment of silence, and then I'll have an officer to lead us in the presence of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was Officer Tracy Carroll from Cobb County Police. Please leave us in the presence of allegiance. So we have a couple of presentations this morning, and I'd like Commissioner Burle to present the first one. And...
And the board.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. If I could ask GBI Director Vic Reynolds and his lovely wife Holly to join the board up here. This is a very special day. I have the honor of, we have the honor of presenting our former district attorney, who we love dearly, and his wife Holly is here with them today. A proclamation for his many years of service to this county, to the state, and all the work that he's done. From Elderly Abuse Task Force, gangs, anti-gang enforcement, opioid crisis, I just, I could go on and on all day, but some of it's here in the proclamation. Whereas Vic Reynolds, through a legal career that spans more than 30 years, has proven himself a proponent of justice and defender of the public good. And whereas born and raised in Rome, Georgia, Reynolds set his career path early by graduating with a criminal justice degree from Georgia Southern University in 1979, and spending years working as a Floyd County Police Officer. And whereas Reynolds then pursued a law degree from Georgia State University, graduating in 1986, he served as an assistant district attorney for six years in Fulton County and Cobb County. In 1994, he moved on to become Cobb's chief magistrate judge, where he presided over the county's drug court. In 2012, after more than a dozen years in private practice, he won elections to become Cobb County's district attorney. And whereas Reynolds was instrumental in the creation of the accountability courts, the Cobb County Cold Case Unit, the Anti-Gang Enforcement Unit. He served as the chairman and facilitator of the Cobb Elder Abuse Task Force, was appointed by Governor Deal to the Georgia Commission on Family Violence, and elevated the Cobb County District Attorney's Office to national presence. I'm sorry, national prominence. And whereas Reynolds is a published legal author with one of the world's foremost law publishers. His columns on criminal justice issues have appeared in both national and statewide publications. Most recently, he was selected by Governor Brian Kemp as the newest director of the Georgia Bureau of Investigations. And whereas his work and dedication is not just limited to the legal professions, he is a member of the Kiwanis Club, Marietta First United Methodist Church, and has served on the advisory board for Kennstone Hospital. In 2016, he was named Marietta Citizen of the Year by the Marietta Area Council. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the vital and distinguished public service of Vic Reynolds. His hard work has sought to keep us all safe from those who would tear at the piece and fabric of our community. He has earned our deepest gratitude. This is the 12th day of March 2019. Thank you. They don't come any better than this man right here. They don't make 'em like this anymore. And now the governor has stolen you away from Cobb, but you still live here, and you're still a county resident, and we love you, and we appreciate all your hard work on our behalf. Could the folks from the DA's office, the courts, the community that are here for support for Vic and Holly, please stand? Thank you for being here. God bless you. Do you want to say anything?
We just wanted to get Holly here. I can't agree with Commissioner Moore. They don't make 'em like you anymore, Vic. You have, you have made Cobb proud. And I just want you to know that all that you have done here to make this a place where people can safely work, live, play, and pursue their dreams, you're the epitome of that. So we wish you all the best in your future endeavor, but you know you're always welcome back here. And Holly, same goes to you. We're gonna miss you, but you haven't gone very far either. So thank you very much.
I just want to echo, I mean, you know, the work on the Elder Abuse Task Force and dealing with the opioid crisis. I mean, it doesn't get any better. I mean, it's our loss. The governor's gain, but wish you all the best, and we want to see both of you back here soon.
I echo that sentiment. I wish you the best. I remember us being on the trail together, and you've moved on. And it's just great to see your trajectory and to work alongside of those who've worked alongside you in the DA's office. And we pray that the good work continues. Best wishes to you both.
Yes, and best wishes to you both. Thank you.
Of course I do. Only thing I want to do is ask if Joanna will read that again so Holly will memorize all those things. Listen, if I'd known you'd love me this much, I might have stayed, but I'm just so honored and humbled. I was told Joanna, long ago, this was certainly not necessary. These folks behind me are all my friends. I've been honored and humbled to work with them over the last six years. This is a great county, let me tell you. In the three and a half weeks or so that I've been the GBI Director, I have the opportunity already to get around and visit some places. And we have a great state, and it's just an exciting place to be, but Cobb is special. And I want you to always remember that. It's home for both me and Holly. We've raised our daughters here. We love this place. It will always be our home. So thank you so much for your love today. I just, I can't tell you from the bottom of our heart how much it means to both of us. And I give you my word as your friend, and my word as a man, I'll do the very best job I can as GBI Director. And thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rod has a presentation.
I would like to ask Dr. Peter Giles, principal for Wheeler High School, and Dr. Kevin Daniel, who is chief of staff for the school district, and then also Mr. Christian Kelly, the supervisor of science, to come up. So this proclamation is gonna be, it's gonna kind of, it's pretty phenomenal, but it's also, we're gonna have a little fun. So you all know what STEM is. You may not know what STEAM is. That adds arts to STEM. But we're here to celebrate Wheeler's selection as the second-best STEM program in the country. So whereas East Cobb's very own Wheeler High School was recently ranked number two on a prestigious list of the top 30 high school science, technology, engineering, math programs in the nation, Study.com staff ranked schools using a system that places different weights on important aspects, such as student-teacher ratios, AP test participation, scores in STEM subjects, and a special STEM innovation score. And whereas economic statistics show that STEM jobs grew three times as fast as non-STEM jobs from 2000 to 2010. Research shows that rigorous STEM education can give students interested in pursuing these fields head starts before they reach college. The Wheeler STEM Center offers an accelerated and advanced curriculum focusing on medical biotechnology, engineering robotics, chemical engineering, and advanced chemistry. I know those all sound like college courses. The program culminates in senior research and internships with local businesses and institutional partners. And whereas Study.com highlighted how Wheeler High School places special emphasis on STEM academics and unique STEM educational experiences, the school provides research and hands-on opportunities as well as preparation for college degrees in STEM fields. This gives students the freedom of opportunity to explore their passions and interests before they reach college. Study.com also praised Wheeler's STEM magnet program as the first to achieve STEM certification in the state of Georgia in 2012, as well as STEM certification in 2017. And whereas Pi Day was created to celebrate the mathematical constant pi. It falls on March 14th, or 314, are the first three digits of pi. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare Pi Day, March 14th, as Wheeler High School STEM Program Day in Cobb County. This 12th day of March 2019.
Well, we'd just like to say thank you so much. This is an accomplishment that is only feasible through an incredible staff. Wheeler is an amazing community school with a phenomenal staff. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Dr. Cheryl Crooks, who is now in the central office, who kind of spearheaded our program and has been the matriarch of it for so many years. The county was fortunate to pick her up in a position now, but great students, great parent support. As we always say, we are a collaborative community for student success. And this was just representative of our community coming together for our students. So, thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations again to Wheeler High School and all their program. On to public comment. How many speakers?
You have five speakers.
Okay, so again, you have five minutes to speak. Let us know who you are and where you live in the county, and you're the first speaker. We'll address the rest of the board, please.
The first is David Birkenbine.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. David Birkenbine, District 4. We're still working on outdoor burning. I'm gonna have to run through this real fast. Mr. Chairman, these pages I gave the board shows the attitudes of outdoor burning from 2006 to 2019. From EPA, state forestry, the law is a good law, and it protects burners and people. Along with the people that have a medical burn ban, it gives specific guidelines for the citations and fines if any sections were violation. But I want to start off by a letter that should have never been written. Son ingrained mentality of the law not being followed and the dangers of interpretation of the law by the people enforcing the law. This one here is the medical burn ban my wife had, and then the next one. If you notice down at the bottom, they changed approval request, and then they cite a regulation. And then the next one is a letter down at the bottom where it says, "Because of sincere concern for my wife's medical condition, Director Sam Heaton made a visit to our neighborhood and assessed the situation. His visit revealed that our neighbors are currently abiding by existing ordinance. And then they want me to call the fire department when the neighbors start burning again, and then call, and call, and call." Well, that's the same thing that's in those letters. If you would, please, take time to read them and go through the notes of what I've been battling ever since 2006. Then you'll see that we have an ingrained mentality. This is a total slap in the face by having this arrogant attitude toward the citizens of Cobb County of thinking they know what does or does not affect them as a resident in Cobb County in an outdoor burning situation. This statement is total biased and prejudicial to all citizens wanting to enjoy their home and property, outdoors, indoors, without odors of lowering the air quality within their residence and property. To keep calling 911 for the fire department to come out to the same place is counterproductive, and they wasted men and equipment. They could have taken care of the situation on the first trip by enforcing the law, not interpreting the law. People will be upset with me, but if they, if they would read the law as they, the law has saved a lot of money and time, they could have saved a lot of money in time, realize the law protects all citizens and residents of Cobb County. The second letter from the public safety, you also have in your folder, I'll continue on with the next meeting. But when we go to the outdoor burning, like I say, reputations, reputations, reputations. I don't see where it's a problem to enforce it. You say you're gonna enforce it. You write you're gonna enforce it. You do this, you do that. You write articles on what you're gonna protect. You write articles saying it's a citizen. You write articles saying that we're here to protect you, and then you come up with letters like we had back here. It's, you know, we talk about clean wood. We talk about whatever. I mean, you know, Cobb 2020 has breathe easy program for cigarette smokes. Well, why don't we have a breathe easies program for outdoor burning? That's gonna affect the whole county instead of just a few people that you're gonna walk by if they're smoking a cigarette. But the fire chiefs will be authorized to acquire the extinguisher if any fire adversely interferes with the enjoyment of life or use of property. If they call up, we come right, we come right down there to violation and penalties. Let the violation and penalties take care of themselves. Let the law work. Let the courts do whatever they want to do. Right now, this year, I'm gonna be working with EPA to see, since they banned outdoor barrels, it's just a different form of barrel. Barrel. It's circular. It's so high. You're throwing stuff in it. You're burning. What's the difference? There ain't no difference. You got a pad. You just, you just change the terminology of it. You outlawed a barrel to have all this other stuff going in. It's just crazy. We just, we gotta get a handle of it. I sat down and watched some of this presentation that you had this morning. Keep Cobb clean. Well, let's, let's be serious and keep Cobb clean. Let's enforce this law to the best of our ability. When we go out, we do the citations. We do whatever it takes. If people don't understand the law, give them the law. Let them understand it. Let's have programs on it, on what outdoor burning does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Birkenbine.
The next speaker is Ray Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ray Thomas. I am president of Legacy of the Riverline, Veterans Memorial, and Discovery Boulevard in Mableton, and also a board member of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. This morning, I want to comment about the proposed new park name on Discovery Boulevard. As I understand it, the, this name was, the name, Chattahoochee Riverline Park, was originally on the agenda this morning. However, it's, it's been taken off. Originally, we, our community was involved in the, in the conversation and discussion about this particular, the naming of this particular park. Our community, well, I myself personally was involved in negotiations with preservationists in trying to reach a compromise on the name of the particular park for this tract. And let me say, before I even get into what the compromise was, let me thank you all first of all for deciding to develop the park, and we certainly appreciate it. It's gonna be a very positive asset to our community, and so I'd like to thank you for that. However, the name has been a source of dispute. We came up with a compromised name, Mableton's Chattahoochee Riverline Park, and that was a name that was agreed upon. Now, it's a little bit wordy, and we acknowledge that. However, what was important to us was that the name Mableton was in the, was, part of the name Mableton was, indicates where the location of park would be. In the papers recently, it was announced that this Chattahoochee Riverline Park would be a compromise, was a compromise between the Mableton Improvement Coalition and Roberta Cook's group. That is not entirely correct. The compromised name was Mableton's Chattahoochee Riverline Park. We felt that it was very important for Mableton to be part of the name. Now, since that name was changed to a proposed name of Chattahoochee Riverline Park, we're not in agreement with that. As a result, I'd like to propose an alternative, an alternative name. The park is located on Discovery Boulevard. We are proposing that the name Discovery Riverline Park be considered. And I would strongly recommend that the commission adopt that particular name. It's a name that is, that is a neutral, a more neutral name. As you know, there are folks in the community who feels that, or in my community, who feels that the original name Johnson Riverline Battlefield Park was not, was not an appropriate name for the park. And so we reached a compromise. That compromise was not full, was not accepted, and so therefore, we're recommending this alternative. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Robin Meyer.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer. I live in Mableton, Georgia as well, in District 4, and I serve as chairman of the Board of Directors of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I participated in those conversations that Mr. Thomas recounted to you this morning and agree entirely with the description of events that he presented to you, so I won't repeat them. What I do want to do is endorse the name that we are proposing, Discovery Riverline Park. From the outset, we had hoped to get the word discovery into the park, into the park name. We think it is optimistic, diverse, forward-looking, and that it provides something for everyone. This is a park where you can just, where you will be able to, in a, we hope, a very short time, discover recreation opportunities, community opportunities, historical assets, the Chattahoochee River itself. We want this park's name to be as welcoming to residents, future residents, and visitors as we believe our community is today. So please, as we move forward on this issue, help us name this park in a way that represents our community at its very best and moves away from anything which can be considered divisive and all candor backward-looking. And I say this from the perspective of a history major. I am vitally interested in, concerned about, and protective of the historical assets that exist in our community. But by the same token, I've come to realize that not everybody is a history major. Not everybody's as interested as I am. So that's why I want this park to go forward as a place in which people can discover the parts of it that are of interest to them. The, I think one of the most, one of the other difficulties with the name as currently proposed of Chattahoochee Riverline Park is that there is already a Riverline Park in Smyrna. In fact, it's just up the road on Oakdale, within a mile, within a couple of miles. Putting Chattahoochee in front of Riverline is not emphatic enough to get the average listener to distinguish between those two park names. Putting discovery or discover in front of Riverline is enough. It's a different kind of name. It's a, it causes one to perk up, perk up their ears. And hopefully, if it's gonna be shorthanded, it won't be shorthanded to Riverline Park, which would be the same as the Smyrna Park, but it would be shorthanded to Discovery Park or Discovery River Park, which would give it a distinctive impression in people's minds and would locate it on Discovery Boulevard, which is, surprise, surprise, where it is actually located. So thank you very much for your consideration of this. It's our understanding that although it's on the printed agenda, as being on the consent agenda, that it will not be taken up today. So we would ask that you give this due consideration, and we are available at any time that we can, that we can manage to talk with you about this in depth and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Roberta Cook.
Good morning, Chairman, Boys, and Commissioners. My name is Roberta Cook. I'm from Mableton. I'm a person that wears many hats, and the hat I'm wearing today is Connect the Comet. Our group advocates for the extension of the Silver Comet Railroad Trail to connect with Atlanta's Belt Line. So in the near future, people will be able to safely hike or bike all the way from the city of Atlanta to the state of Alabama. I'm modeling our eye-catching yellow shirt with our green logo, and our website is on the back of the shirt. ConnectTheComet.org. Last year, the state of Georgia acquired more abandoned Silver Comet Railroad track from CSX. So Cobb County can now extend the trail all the way to the Chattahoochee River, where Atlanta is waiting on the other side with the trail system to the Belt Line. I'm here for two reasons. On behalf of all the Silver Comet supporters, I'm requesting the Board of Commissioners make the Silver Comet Trail a funding priority. The Silver Comet Trail is important because it's the expressway and backbone of the Georgia Trail System, providing connectivity to all the spur trails and stimulating economic development along the way. For this request, I brought a visual aid that most of you are familiar with. It's the cup with the Silver Comet logo. We need money for the Silver Comet. There it is. We haven't forgotten about the park's bond, 12.5 million, by the way. Second, if we could show our little sign here. I'm inviting the Commissioners and the general public to visualize the alignment of the future Silver Comet Trail extension this Saturday. Our Connect the Comet group is providing free roadside tours of the abandoned CSX Silver Comet Railroad track. Look for our Connect the Comet table, T-shirts, and yard signs near the corner of Atlanta Road and Plant Atkinson Road on Saturday, March 16th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For more details, visit our web For more details, visit our website at www.konecthecomet.org. And again, the shirt. Thank you.
Robert, it's always a pleasure. Bring the cup back anytime.
The last speaker is Ophelia Nunes.
Good morning, Commissioner Boyce, sorry, Chairman Boyce and Commissioners. My name is Ophelia Nunes, and I'm with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Atlanta, and just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for your continued support of the nonprofit contracts in Cobb County. Without your support, we wouldn't be able to serve over 1,500 youth at three of our club locations here in Cobb. And we're also very fortunate to be a part of the collaborative and be able to work in partnership with so many agencies that provide such an array of services to families in Cobb, all the way from children, young children to elderly. And wanted to respectfully request and ask to please continue funding the nonprofit contracts in Cobb so that we can continue to provide services to the constituents and be able to bring in different, different opportunities for youth and, and families. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nunes. Is that the last speaker? All right, so now we're going to go on the consent agenda, and for those who have the old agenda, there was number item 20, which was addressing the Riverline Park and the naming of it, that at the request of Commissioner Cupid, we're going to pull that from the agenda item, from the consent agenda, and address it on another, another day. So, 12 also. We just can't just, we just can't modify the language? Okay. So we're going to go, and number 12 was a, I'm sorry, number 12 was addressing the procurement of professional services for installation of some speed bumps on some roads in Cobb County. The issue here was that one of the, one of the roads was not an issue with the, with the residents, but the other road was, and we cannot modify the consent agenda just to pull one road off. So we're going to have to pull that whole agenda item off and then readdress it for another day. Unless you want to put it to regular, then we can modify it that way, I believe, can't we? No? Okay, all right. We'll just pull it entirely.
Yeah, it's just easier to pull it. I mean, it'll just be two weeks.
Okay, and just bring it back another day. Okay? So with that, I'm going to have, we're going to go through the consent agenda items on your screen, so those who are here and at home can look at the agenda items before we vote on them. With that, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda item as revised.
I'll second, but just also want to, I'm going to be voting in favor, but I will not be voting in, I'm voting against 35.
Okay, so please, County Clerk, please acknowledge and record that. Any other comments before we vote on it? That I'll call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to, to regular, regular agenda here. Get the right page here. Start with number 37, I believe, and County Manager, you have the floor.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure this morning to recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of a new Senior Services Director. I am recommending Dr. Jutan Gibson to be appointed as the Senior Services Director. Dr. Gibson is very well-qualified and has over 12 years of experience in the public health field as well as managing aging-in-place programs. Prior to the appointment of Dr. Gibson, though, I would like to, to take a moment and also announce that we have made an appointment as a Deputy Director to Dr. Gibson. Sandy Panici, who has served in the role as Interim Director, has been appointed as the Deputy Director, which will be coincidental with Dr. Gibson's appointment as the new Senior Services Director, which we are recommending on March 25th. I'd like to congratulate both Sandy and Dr. Gibson for working together through this process, and am pleased to present that for the Board's consideration this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve this item, but then also open it up for discussion.
Okay, so we have a second?
Second.
All right, now discussion?
Okay. I know, I will say this was one of my first executive sessions, and I personally was not pleased with the policy and how this was handled, so my vote will reflect that and not necessarily the applicant.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, I have a question. The item regarding Sandy Panici, that will come before the Board for consideration, or is that an independent matter to be addressed?
No, ma'am, that will not come in front, that will not come to the Board. That was an appointment that was made by myself and Director Tanks in consultation with Dr. Gibson, Commissioner.
Okay, very good. You mentioned the date of March 25th. Does that refer to another matter?
The appointment for Dr. Gibson would be effective March 25th. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments? Okay, call a question. And it passes four to one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jose. DOT. Before I forget, could you give me one minute? You can stay right there. Is Dr. Gibson here? Yes, could you please come up here so we could all take, see who you are and congratulate you? And Sandy, is Sandy here also? Yes, please, both of them. We want to, the Board wants to welcome you to this very important responsibility, and if you had to make some comments, we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all of the Commissioners and Chairman Boyce. This is a great opportunity for me. I always continue in my career to try to marry my passion and also what I've learned professionally. And working with older adults, that's what I love, to see the smiles, to see what we can do to continue with the mission that Cobb has of improving the lives of older adults. That's what we want to do. And Sandy and I have been talking, and that's what we've agreed to do and work together as a team. And thank you, Sandy, also for welcoming, and I look forward to working with you guys.
And the Board also wants to thank Sandy for your time as the interim and your continued passion for the seniors in this county. You have done so much to make their lives better. And if I had just one piece of advice, please do not come recommending senior fees any time in your tenure. Just want to help you out here, so.
Thank you.
Welcome you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Erica, sorry about, thanks for your indulgence. Give you back the podium.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So we have four items for consideration this, this morning. The first item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia in an amount not to exceed $222,000 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on the Wendy Hill Road-Tyrrell Mill Road Connector project.
Commissioner, motion to approve. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $7,433.14 for drainage system repairs on St. George Terrace.
Commissioner Cupid? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One to Resurfacing Contract 2018-3 Local Roads North with Bartow Paving Company, Inc., and net no-cost change to the contract for resurfacing of county-maintained streets, Project Number X 2908, approve a no-cost contract time extension through June 30th, 2019, and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. And our last item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Smyrna for Quiet Zone at Nica Jack Road, Project Number X 2313, approve the corresponding budget transactions, and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Public Services?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our item this morning is for the Board to approve a construction contract to correct stormwater drainage issues at Fuller's Park under the 2011 Park Splot Program. The original stormwater conveyor system, on the conveyance system on the southern border of the park is failing and is in danger of causing damage to property outside of the park boundary. With the assistance of the water system, our staff and an outside engineering firm have developed a program to correct the issue and safely convey the water down to Sewell Mill Creek. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a construction contract with WE Contract Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $171,938.10 to correct stormwater drainage issues at Fuller's Park under the 2011 Park Splot Program.
Commissioner, motion to approve. Have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This morning, I have the privilege of bringing for you a contract with Laz Parking for the management of our parking decks, parking garages. We're recommending Laz Parking to manage and operate two deck, the two parking decks at 115 Waddell Street and 191 Lawrence Street. Laz Parking will operate the parking decks in accordance with the terms set forth in the final contract with Cobb County and be responsible for all staffing, cleaning, and routine maintenance. Each annual budget, any changes to parking fees and operating hours must be agreed upon by Cobb County in writing in advance of implementation. I ask that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Laz Parking for the management and operation of the two parking decks at 115 Waddell Street and 191 Lawrence Street, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eddie, before I make a motion, there's been some folks that have reached out and, and said that, you know, when we did, started six months ago, kind of tweaking with this, that we would, you know, kind of look at the numbers, and if you and Bill could just talk about everything that's happened from when the Board first set the rates between then and now, looking at traffic and all those kind of things.
Okay. I'll start, and then I'll let you chime in on the finances. What we did is we put the operation of the parking deck out on the street for an RFP. We had five companies that turned in RFPs that did cost analysis of our decks, gave us options of what they would do if they were running our decks, talked about making improvements. Laz Parking, we felt like as a committee, if they were, they had the best proposal that would move us forward, but we have done our homework. We've actually looked at this for the last two years really hard. We've looked at, we look at our finances every week to see where we're at, what we could do differently, and we believe at this time, as a staff, that it's the best thing to do, to have a company come operate our decks.
And part of the analysis that y'all did was looking at traffic counts and, and what the impact was from the rates that the Board set?
Exactly was. Yes, it was.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything else you want to add?
I would just like to echo what Eddie said regarding the revenues. I mean, we, we, as you know, we went to the automated system last, last February, so a little over a year ago. We monitor those every month, and we compare them up to where we were, you know, not only last year, but the last five to seven years. So we're looking at those very closely, and as you know, one big piece of this is the debt service that's tied to these decks, which we obviously do not have an out on. Not until 2021 are those even callable. So we're, our hands are tied with that at least through 2021, and that's a big significant portion of this parking deck operation.
Right, so any suggestion about trying to pay off the bonds? We can't do that until 2021.
That is correct. Even if the Board wanted to, we could not even consider that until 2021 as part of the bond issuance agreement.
Right, okay. All right, Eddie, one, one last thing, I'm going to make the motion here, but I would like, and you and I talked about this before the meeting, there's been some discussion with some of the folks in the city about looking at going from the first 15-minute rate to the first 30-minute rate. So what I would ask is before we sign any final contracts, that we talk to Laz and see if that's a possibility.
Yeah, Doug Brooks from Laz is here today. I've already mentioned this to him, and so we will be talking about that to see if that's an option for us to do.
Okay, all right. With that, I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 44, which is to approve a contract with Laz Parking for the management and operation of the two parking decks at 115 Waddell Street and 191 Lawrence Street.
I'll second that.
Yeah, 43.
Okay.
I, I had some concerns too, and some feedback on the 15-minute versus 30, to go to 30. When we discussed this, when we took it over and put in the equipment for the self-pay, we, we talked about making it convenient for people who were just filing papers at the courthouse, and you can't do that, park and get over there and back in 15 minutes. So I would recommend an agreement with that change as well for the fee structure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Eddie, since we have Laz here, can we just have them provide comment about what their interaction will be with the business community regarding the parking fees, because we've gotten feedback from them, and I'm just curious to know how they will move forward with it.
Sure, I know they have a plan in place, and Doug, would you mind coming up and comment on that?
The question was...
How will you work with the businesses that are in the square regarding the use of the parking deck and the impact that this fee, this fee will have on their operations?
So, within our plan and the infrastructure included, we would really work to connect with each one of, and any of the business stakeholders throughout the community, just as a part of our day-to-day. We want to network with them and partner with them and make sure that they understand what changes are happening, and that we offer programs such as validation programs and things that will help them park the cars that they have coming to their business and really integrate with the activities and things that they have going on, so we would...
So you are including a validation...
Yes.
...option with coming onboard for the area businesses?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll call a question. Passes four to one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Now we're on to Property Management.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning, is to approve a contract with Garland Design Solutions Incorporated for the exterior wall and roof restoration at the new Public Safety Training Center. The Public Safety Training Center is an eligible capital improvement project under 2016 Splot. The Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Garland Design Build Solutions Incorporated in an amount of $1,024,000.
in an amount of $1,024,213 for the restoration of the existing exterior wall and roof at the Public Safety Training Center, 2435 East West Connector, Ossdale, a 2016 Splot project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
Sure. Yes, I move that we support this agenda item, and it's great to see this move along. I think it's going to be a great addition to that corridor and for the public safety community at large.
You have a second? Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thanks, sir.
Sir Tommy from Purchasing?
Good morning. The purpose of this item is to request approval for creation of a Coordinator of Insurance Services position. Our responsibilities of this position will include, but not be limited to, assisting potential risk issues in county contracts, determining appropriate insurance requirements, and ensuring compliance with county insurance requirements. We're requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the creation of a Coordinator of Insurance Services position, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and authorize the Chairman to execute necessary documents.
Commissioner Roddick.
Motion to approve.
Have a second? Have a second? Any discussion?
Yes. I just want to share I'm in support of this. I know we've had a couple of matters in the district where this could certainly have helped move things along. This is helpful, and just know that this will have impact on our ongoing budget with the county.
Yeah. And I want to, I want to support you on that one. I don't, many people don't appreciate the breadth and width of our documents from the legal department that involve insurance. And if they saw the magnitude and sometimes the thickness of some of these documents, this is just one aspect of getting it right to make sure we provide quality services. So I just want to join Commissioner Cupid in supporting this, this program. Yes, ma'am.
And it will be covered by Splot, like our legal fees are too.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Joe.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Public Safety?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. If you'd allow me, I'd like to go off script just for a moment and ask that, ask that the Board and Cobb County employee family remember our department and the family of Stacy Bowe where today marks the one-year anniversary of her line of duty death. So if you would, please keep her family in your thoughts.
Matter of fact, let's just take a moment of silence for Stacy. That's appropriate. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
We have one item, and Cobb Fire is requesting the authorization for the advertisement and acceptance of sealed bids from interested manufacturers regarding the proposed purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and associated equipment. These lifesaving pieces of equipment are essential to firefighting and rescue scenes as required under the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association 1500. The present SCBA systems are approaching 10 years old and are quickly reaching the end of their useful service lives, presenting warranty, repair, and maintenance issues. Additionally, as the number of apparatus and personnel increases, with growth, uniformity in equipment is essential for safety and training. CCFES will bring forth in a subsequent agenda item when bids are unsealed and evaluated for cost and adherence to bid specifications set forth. Therefore, Cobb Fire recommends that the Cobb Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement and acceptance of sealed bids from interested manufacturers regarding the proposed purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and associated equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. We've had, already had public comment, correct me if I'm stank, all speakers. So make sure I missed anything. All right, so now into appointments. I make a motion that the Board approve the appointment of Dr. Paula Greaves and the reappointment of Dr. Carol Holtz to the Board of Health.
Second.
I'll second. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero. And I also make a move to approve the appointment of Dr. Paula Greaves and the reappointment of Dr. Carol Holtz on the Community Service Board.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Okay, that passes five to zero. Just want to make sure, is Dr. Greaves here? She's, she's, she's a practicing doctor, so she's probably at work right now. But she's very excited about this appointment. We're glad to have her on, on both boards. And then I'd like to announce the appointment of Dr., oh, yeah, yeah, I lost my head here. To announce the appointment of Dana Johnson to the Workforce Development Board. And then Kelly, Commissioner Gamble, I believe you have some appointments this morning.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to announce the appointment of Peggy Holbrook to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
No, it's just, it's your appointment.
No, it requires about...
Not according to my script. My script is wrong. So is that a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
And now I'd like to make the announcement to reappoint Abby Parks to the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to reappoint, announcing the appointment of Charmaine Shin to the Airport Advisory Board, and to announce the appointment of Allison Bickers to the Transit System Advisory Board.
Thank you. And with that, I'll stay with you for Commissioner comments.
Yep. We've had a month full of meetings, and that continues with ongoing meetings regarding our parks. Last night, there was a meeting regarding Old Westside Road Park Land, and I believe we'll have another meeting on Wednesday, March 20th, at the South Cobb Community Center to discuss the combined 21 acres of Veterans Memorial and Henderson Road properties. The meeting on Wednesday, March 20th will be at the South Cobb Community Center from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And not taking away any thunder from Chairman Boyes, he will continue with his Town Hall meetings in District Four this week, which will be held on Thursday, and at the times of 3:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. at the South Cobb Community Center. A few more announcements, Chairman. One of my favorite events that I look forward to twice a year is the spring book sale of our Cobb County libraries. That will be kicking off on Friday, March 15th, and will go to Sunday. I don't necessarily enjoy picking through the smatterings of books and tapes left over on Sunday, but if you wait, you can bring a box and fill it up and get everything that you can get in that box for a very attractive price. I believe large, or smaller boxes were 20. I think larger boxes were 30. And I don't want to misquote the price, but it will certainly be a steal if you head out there. At our past Community Zoning Meeting, Habitat for Humanity was there, and they spoke about their new programs here in Cobb and their renewed focus on rehabilitation of older properties. And one service that I'd like to recognize is their Veteran Service Program. For those who have served, please contact Habitat for Humanity if there are any home issues that need to be ameliorated. There are volunteers waiting to assist you. We have a number of other events. I'm not going to go through the list, but just encourage you to go to cobbcounty.org backslash Cupid to see a list of other events coming up. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. We have a number of events going on in District One this, this week. First, on March 14th, we'll continue the Chairman's Town Hall sessions at the North Cobb Senior Center at 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. Secondly, on March 16th, Sorba of West Georgia is having a Day for the Trails at Lost Mountain Parks. The purpose of this is, workday is to meet with all the trail users and walk every feature of the park and make sure that everyone is comfortable with the trails at the park. The second event is March 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Cobb 4H is hosting a Cobb 4H Family Science Night at the UGA Cobb County Cooperative Extension Office located on South Cobb Drive. And finally, on March 27th, the North Cobb Christian School will be having a service project at Noonday Creek. Thank you.
Okay. I'd first like to say thank you to the Bell's Ferry Civic Association, Bell's Ferry Elementary School, and Keep Cobb Beautiful for the tree planting at the school this past Friday. This was a project as a result of DOT project at Bell's Ferry and Barrett Parkway, or Piedmont, where some sidewalks and turn lanes were revised, and it kind of left the playground at the school open exposure to the road. So Keep Cobb Beautiful, once again, came to the rescue and, and the Bell's Ferry Civic Association implanted trees to kind of screen the playground at the school from the road. So thank you for all the efforts there, all the volunteers last Friday. And the Next Coffee with Your Cop for Precinct Four will be held on Tuesday, March the 19th, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. at The Art Place, 3330 Sandy Plains Road in Marietta. Officer Jek has gotten very creative, and there is a fee if you want to be creative and for the art materials with your cop. And it's a $5 fee, and you do need to register. But if you just want to come and visit and talk to everyone, there is no pre-registration or fee. So I hope you can all attend. And also, I'd like to wish everyone a happy St. Patty's Day on Sunday.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Roddick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to recognize Missy Owens and Jenny Walton, who are in the audience. She's going, "I'm going to kill you." But they are, they are with the Davis Direction Foundation, and also importantly, the Zone, which is in Commissioner Burl's district, because if I don't say that, you will. But it is a tremendous facility that helps folks recovering from addiction. And I just want to, you know, see my hats off to the tremendous job that you guys do. So I just want to let everybody know you're here. We spent an hour today talking about trash, and it's going to be in the newsletter. Kim and I have been working on that, especially in District Two. We had the unfortunate having the highest number this morning on Kimberly's scale. We just need to really work together to try to get the trash off the streets. DOT is collecting about 2,000 pounds of trash every weekend. That's just around the county or in District Two. So I would ask everybody, you know, if you see somebody with that trash bag on their roof going towards a dumpster, don't let them get out of the apartment complex or the townhome community before they put it into the dumpster. Next one is just a reminder, tonight at 7:00 at Chimney Springs Church, we're going to have the next installment of Josh, Johnson Ferry Schalford Master Plan. Also, on March 28th, so this is a change of location. I have my Town Hall at 7:00 at the Church of St. Anne on Roswell Road. And finally, Eddie, could you come up? He's going to definitely kill me. Brad, can you show the cover? So we have this magazine that's about Recreation and Parks in Georgia. Eddie's going, "I know what this is." So this, this kind of goes out in all of Georgia, and our own Jimmy Geese wrote an article about our own Eddie Cannon. We got some great pictures in here.
Oh, I envy you, Eddie.
So this, this is recognition of Eddie and the great job that he does. Just another example of the tremendous staff that we have. There's more pictures. Okay, Brad? We got another page.
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I might add that Jimmy Geese was across the table eating his hot fudge sundae.
That's exactly right. It's all about having fun. But I just want, I just want to say, you know, Eddie does a tremendous job. He did a great job when he was Parks Rec. Did you catch any fish that day?
Yes, we did.
All right. And now, and he is now our Support Services Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Eddie. Great. And I'd just like to, do we have the slide of the Town Halls? All I can say is eight down, eight to go. But these are, these are the remaining Town Halls. But some really great questions out there, and I had to tell people, I really enjoy these. I know that there, you know, there's a lot of them, but I just cannot say how much I enjoy sitting out and talking to the voters and residents of Cobb County. We've already had some great ideas that we'll be bringing to the Board here, that we hear from the audience. So again, encourage you to come. And more importantly, engage, encourage you to stay in contact with your Commissioners through the emails and phone calls. This Board really hears you. We really do. Your voice is heard by this Board, and this is just one of the many ways that we reach out to you to let you know how important you are, and you're vital to this process called democracy. And I know our founding fathers would be very proud of what we do here in Cobb County and how well this Board works hard to represent you. So with that, we're adjourned.